Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This presentation tonight, I'm getting ready to go over with each of you and everybody that's out there on Facebook that's looking, it's been something that's been very passionate to me, and I know also this will affect everybody for a lot of years. So, just to go back in history just a little bit, I was at a meet, it was actually a basketball meet, a number of years ago in Roanoke. And as manager, everywhere I go, if it's a success of them, I always try to learn something from it, but I was at awe when I went into this complex and saw all these indoor courts and a number of kids that were coming in and out of that place every day. It was actually amazing to me. So, you know, sitting there talking to some of the parents, all of them all throughout the day said, "Todd, you need to try and bring one of those to Tazle. We would love to have one of those in Tazle." So, I talked to Coach King, Coach King obviously coaches track amongst some other sports. You know, our kids today have to travel all the way to Liberty University in order to have a sanctioned track being in an indoor track anyway, is that correct? Liberty University or Roanoke?
Both Roanoke, okay, they can only use Roanoke once a year, I think.
So, obviously there's a need in my head. So, on December the 28th, 2018, the town of Tazle purchased a rainmill lot. Now, the rainmill lot at the time was appraised at north of $1 million. We paid right at $300,000 for that property. So, the whole idea was that may be a future home for a sports complex. The other idea for purchasing that property, which by the way, the IDA on today was it was obviously a good financial investment. So, since that time, I've had a couple of investors come to me and say, "Look, anytime you want to get rid of that property for what you've got in it or what you've paid for, let me know, we'll take it off your hands." So, at a $1 million, 1.1 actually, we paid $300,000, pretty good investment. On June the 13th of 2018, I had a meeting at the front porch with a couple of investors. Some of these investors, one of them was from Northern Virginia, some from local, but the idea was to pitch out a dream for Tazle that I felt like would not only be a benefit for Tazle, but also the economy all across the county and the region. And what more could I do as manager to bring a consistent number of people throughout a physical year or throughout a calendar year, every weekend, not just seasonal, but every weekend? So, we talked about that a little bit, a lot of ideas came out of it. On June the 6th, 2019, this council agreed to sign a feasibility study that was done by Shemera. Shemera's got a home base in Richmond. I've been to see them a couple of times, and I'm happy to say, very excited to say, that last week, actually on February the 3rd, we got it back, we got the feasibility study back. Yeah, I'm smiling for me to hear that. So, I'm really, I'm really excited, I got a shoe bump for another side more, but I'm really, really excited about the opportunity. So, what I want to do tonight is take the next 10, 15 minutes and just go through the summary of it. I don't want to go through the whole Shemera report, but Robin will try to keep up with my ADD and move it up and down as we go. The executive summary, the executive summary, the very first thing on there, it says, "A multi-use sports complex is being considered for the town of Tazle, Virginia based on initial plan. This facility will provide equipment and space for following indoor sports." And what it has listed, pay attention to this, is basketball, volleyball, cheerleading, gymnastics, indoor track and wrestling. But that's all it's got. Well, what about indoor soccer? What about indoor batting cages? And I'm sure several of you out here can name enough, plenty of other indoor sports activity events that can be held in a facility like this. If you go down to the next paragraph below that on the Tazle market area, it says, "Tazle defines Tazle market area based on the drive time. A two-hour drive radius from Tazle plus a few Virginia counties that are outside the two-hour radius, but those schools are located in Western and Southern Virginia are included in the general market area." So, if you look at a general market area, that's two hours out. Well, between here and the spectrum, if you're doing a speed limit, it's two hours and five minutes. I looked at it before I came here on the phone. So, and we'll get to that. The paragraph right under that kind of defines both of those areas. Shemera also defines a core market area. Well, the core market area is obviously within one hour drive. So, I'll consider that home, and the paragraph above it is the general market area. It's kind of outside, outside people that are going to come to tournaments on a scheduled basis. Based on 2018 data, there were 1.8 million residents in the general market area. 1.8 million residents that participate in the general market area. So, I'm going to elaborate some more on that. If you look at the core market area, 411,000. 411,000 in the core market area. Keep in mind, that's the home market area, that's within one hour. Two paragraphs then, actually the last paragraph there. "Based on the latest survey of sports participants conducted by the National Sports Goods Association, the estimated total number of participants for indoor sports listed above in the general market area can reach 255,000. Total days of participation in these can reach 6.9 million days." So, if you go to the next page and look at the top of it, it's got that little per three or per year. If you go down there at the bottom of it, that, it defines that, it says, "After the ramp-up period, it is expected to operate, the operation will stabilize as the region assumes the experience, the experience very modest population growth." So, why would this bring population growth? Well, what Shemera's trying to say is, you build that facility here, what's the only thing, or what is one thing, and I'll challenge any of you to tell me, what's the one thing, name one thing you can do that would almost demand a hotel? All right, now you can bring Bristol Motor Speedway here, it's not going to justify it. Bristol has two races a year, so they're going to beat Bulge for two weeks out of the year. What else can you do? I can't bring a Target here, I can't bring a Mason's here. What's going to bring a hotel? You have to justify, a hotel is not going to locate in a desert. Something's got to bring it. This facility will do it. This facility will do it, and we'll go through here, and I'm going to further justify that. Third paragraph then from the top, "There are a limited number of indoor facilities that can accommodate multipurpose near the town of Tazle. Shemera did not find any indoor sports center within one hour drive of Tazle. Within a two-hour drive, Shemera reached, Shemera research found three indoor sports centers." We'll talk about that a little bit more. So, you have to drive in a radius at least two hours, and you're going to find three. If you go down to the feasibility analysis in that second paragraph, it says, "Shemera study found that 43.6% of coaches of all sports team reported that their current facilities are not adequate, especially for cheerleading. On averages, coaches reported that 8% of their practice or competition demand can be met by an indoor sports center in Tazle." So, that's 43% of who they spoke to with, said that it could be met in Tazle. That doesn't mean that the others, the other 56% said it couldn't, it just mean, it just probably meant they were on vacation when the report came through. They just simply didn't respond to it. But a overwhelming 46% said it would be good. "It is estimated that this demand is sufficient to support a facility with eight full-size basketball courts plus an indoor track." Well, we're only looking at six. Rick Chickwood's sitting back there, he's probably saying, "Do a change order with design eight, Todd." We're only looking, we're only looking at six. So, to me, that's bold, where they're saying we can justify as many as eight. If you go down halfway in the next paragraph, it is estimated that the proposed Tazle sports center could potentially attract 10 tournaments in the core market area, and 33 tournaments in the general market area per year. So, they're saying 10 locally, I'll challenge that. They're also saying 33 in the general, in two hours out, I'll challenge that. I think they're very conservative, matter of fact, I'm going to prove it. To be conservative, Shemera will use 10 tournaments. In the estimate, revenue and economic impact, we can understand that there is upside consequences obviously to bringing more tournaments to Tazle. So, throughout the rest of this study, they're using 10 tournaments. Well, that's only two and a half months out of the year, Dr. Frank, because every weekend we can have basketball, the next weekend, wrestling, volleyball, I mean, it can be a, every single weekend, I can embrace a parking problem, which would be good. So, I think it's very positive. "It is likely that the proposed Tazle sports center will receive rides, pick, support from regional coaches and sports leaders. Over 60% of the survey responded, reported a positive or very positive attitude toward a new sports center in Tazle." The paragraph under that, "The preliminary plan for the Tazle indoor sports center includes six basketball courts plus an indoor track. Shemera's analysis includes that the facility is feasible based on the demand in both market areas." Shemera project, that the total annual number of participants at the facility will be 143,856 per year. The revenue of the center will come from facility rental, tournament fees, concessions, vending, and sponsorship and advertising. Annual revenue of the center is estimated to be $893,336 per year. That's in 2023 dollars. It is likely the revenue in the first year will be lower as the center ramps up its operations. So, if you take that right back to the paragraph right above it, the second paragraph above it, what did it say? 10 tournaments. That's the number they're giving you based on 10 tournaments in regular use throughout the year. To me, that speaks volumes for that facility. Then at the bottom of that page, they're saying in here, "That the estimated annual economic impact, direct impact indirect, on ongoing operation of the center will be $1 million in spending that will support seven jobs in the town. It'll also support nine jobs in the county at 1.2 million." All right, that's 16 jobs right there total. The next paragraph then says, .2, well, that .2 is a $200,000 with two new jobs if you go outside in the, in the core market area and have tournaments in Tazle. So, if we could flip the page over one more time, in the county estimates, 1.4 million that will support 13 jobs a year. Currently, there are limited lodges, lodging options in the Tazle. So, all they're saying is, you know, you're looking at one-day tournaments or two-day tournaments, people are going to have to travel. Well, eventually, you're going to catch the attention of a hotel who would like to have 70 or 80% occupancy. You're also going to catch the attention of that national chain restaurant, whatever it may be, Ruth's, or whatever. And then you're going to catch the attention of other business entrepreneurs. And before you know it, what we've been trying to do in southwest Virginia, when it comes to diversifying the economy, you're putting it at work by the start of the facility that will bring that many people here every weekend. If you subtract the revenue and the expense, it's got a $200,000 annual capital revenue. And that's got nothing to do with the debt service. It's got nothing to do with the debt service at all. So, I'm excited about the project. It's just now in its conception stages. What are we going to do tomorrow? How are we going to move forward? I've talked to a couple of sports industry management teams, I've actually got a conference call with one tomorrow, that actually operates some multimillion dollar facilities around not only the Commonwealth, but, you know, in a thousand mile radius around it, it's just, they're a big outfit. So, we're going to be looking at, obviously, rural development has actually got a bonding program for, if you were to go out and bond this, they actually back a bond for that. So, they actually see the importance for rural America, for small towns, and how these facilities can actually have a positive return on investment to where they'll actually back bonds. So, if you have any questions about it? Just one at a time, please. So, when it comes to, when it comes to paying for it, it's estimated at about $10 million. I think that's a little rich. You know, what we're looking for is a shell building. We're not looking for a big, elaborate building. If, if the times treat us good, and we can put some cosmetics on it, we'll do that. We're going to be looking at funding agencies, low interest loans for the next two years, teaming up with other facilities, public-private partnerships, a lot of ideas, but my dream, and again, without a dream, you don't go anywhere, but my dream is in the next, you know, three, four years to actually hopefully be breaking ground on another idea. You know, I can, I can hear the people now out there in the public, "Well, what about the potholes?" Well, you know what, you know, the town, you know, when you talk about the economy, you know, we're, we're in a spiraling economy in southwest Virginia. Maybe not all over the Commonwealth or in the United States, but, you know, as the economy falls, the inflation keeps going up, our population is actually shrinking to, to a heavy degree. And we have tried in southwest Virginia, all kinds of tactics to bring national businesses and, and big business in, and employ, you know, give jobs, give opportunity, but it hadn't worked. And I'm not so sure that it'll ever work. So, how do you, how do you, how do you turn the economy and bring people in and change the tide? This is the only way that I know that it can be successful. The right management team, if you'll keep in mind the per capita expense that was, went over in the last audit, in 2011, it was $499. Today, it's $1,006 per capita. It's simply because our population is declining at a rate. So, how do you turn it back around? Well, we can keep beating it to death like we have over the last 30 years, and try to get big box business and factories here, or you can embrace the reality of where we are and who we are, and try to make that change possible. But this Shemera report to me is a home run, and I'll guarantee you, we'll have more than 10 tournaments a year at this facility. Any questions?
That's where I see the ROI, it could be a lot more than 6% that they're basing it on here, because I can't imagine doing all that and having to do it 10 weekends a year, the spectrum's packed.
Every single weekend, yeah. I mean, it's every facility that I've ever been to, it's every single weekend. It's not hundreds of kids, it's thousands of kids that run in and out them doors. And people say, "Well, Tazle can't do that with two rules." Well, then you've never been to the Spectrum, because it's out of nowhere. You're not going to walk to McDonald's from the Spectrum. So, kids don't care where they go to play at. It doesn't make any difference. If it's a tournament, I don't care where it's at.
We've been to tournaments in Richland, we've been to tournaments in Marion, we've been to tournaments all over southwest Virginia. And in that one-hour catchment, I was with you and our kids and a whole bunch of other kids, and we flooded Marion for one whole day. Just our table alone, what did that bring to the tax revenue, to the restaurant that we ate at? 30 people, 40 people, so that one hour is real, right away. And there was thousands of people in Marion just from that basketball.
If you have any questions, in closing, I want to say, and, you know, I know this is on Facebook Live, but there, there are people out there that, that don't like this. They don't want to see Tazle grow. Trust me, I've been through this for the last year. They don't want to see Tazle expand. They are always on the negative side of the fence, and they'll say things like, "What about the water lines?" Well, we're working on the water line, but what about the, well, we're working on paving, but we're also trying to save the kids, maybe one day having to leave and go to Charlotte. I've had the same people call me, and they'll say, "My kids are leaving, how come you don't do something?" Then they'll say, "Why are you trying to bring in a certain business?" So, you're going to have the naysayers out there, you're going to have the people that are going to try to knock you down and beat you up. Don't listen to it. Don't pay any attention to it, keep your head up strong, fight your good fight. The Y became a reality with that same attitude here in Tazle, I don't see why this can't be a reality. Just takes time. That's all I've got for that topic. Any other questions?
I have some comments about my visits, but that's for the meeting, right?
Yes, yes, sir. Any other questions?
What terms do you have in the year?
I mean, yeah.
About state.
Yeah. We could have one every week.
How many state partives? If you have a tournament here, then you advance to a state position.
Right, well, this is mainly travel, travel. This is like AAU basketball. Yeah. This is AAU travel ball, rec ball. That's for your money. Every weekend, you want to have a crown change that.
That's all we know.
So, it doesn't have to be basketball every weekend, by the way. It's not the way it works.
We don't have babies anymore.
All right, so next, we're going to get a park revenue and the expenses update from Ben.
All right. Good evening. And like, like you said, I'm going to give a little bit of a report on the expenses and the revenue that we did make, and kind of break down a little bit of each section, and get a better idea. This year for revenue, for pool admission, we made just under 25,000. Exact numbers, I believe, you have, stay the time. Concession was just over 21 grand. Pool rentals was over three. Gym rentals, which was at five. Shelter rentals, which is just under three. And then Aqua Park, which was just under 23,000. Something that is not, for kayak cowboy rentals, was just under two grand. Some of that's not listed there are field reservations. There was never a separate portion to actually take it into, so that was most likely put into shelter rentals. We had about, count correctly, seven tournaments. Most of the time, we litter both fields, which is right at $100. So, you're looking at probably about $700 for the field rentals. The pool admission is also counted night swim. That was twice a week, starting after July 1st, I believe. And like I said, two nights started off really good, it slowed down, it got a little colder towards the end of the, or beginning of fall, but that's also in the pool admission. Aqua Park parties is in the Aqua Park as well, not separate. So, total revenue from all things that we had going on at the park this summer, from April 1st through September 30th, I just didn't give it any extra time on anything, is right at $82,710.86. Now, for the expense portion, it's a little shaky. The park time salaries were our biggest hit, we went to about $57,643.42. The reason that is so high is, right on, I believe, July 6th, we had that $5 day, it took off. We were completely understaffed, we were not ready for that kind of reaction, extremely excited about it, but we were not prepared in terms of what we had budgeted, what we had in staff, which resulted in me going from not having any carts being used, to having to bring concession workers to work extra on weekends to drive carts for me, because from going from no parking lot where that lease zone is, nobody had a park with everybody, just parked at the dam, and they were fine, there was just enough flow to where it didn't cause any parking issues, to that, all parking lots being full, and we had to use the parking lot over the old movie theater. And that involved, we had carts going from the movie theater lot to the lease lot, to our own parking lot. I mean, it was chaotic, in a good way, but it required getting two people consistently Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I think our slowest day was maybe 100 people, and that was the day that there was thunder and lightning, and they stayed the whole day, waiting for an opportunity to go back. Again, good problems to have. I ended up having to borrow lifeguards from the YMCA and Bluefield Parks and Rec because I didn't have enough staff. At the Aqua Park, we used to have about two, one in the water, one on top helping, they could rotate around. I ended up having to put three or four. There was just way too many kids on the light bulbs, one lacquer couldn't see all the angles, so I had to have two rotating. And then having one on the deck to make sure that kid had the right life jackets on, because they were just trying to throw it on and go, for safety purposes, we had them. And then have a fourth one, that way they could rotate, it could break, because it was hot out there. Those were something that kind of just took off, and we're looking right around eight some days of summer, where that was just nonstop. Weekends are obviously different, but the pool stayed active all summer as well. For the pool, we had it right at $3,677.14. That was a little higher than normal, but again, with the Aqua Park, there is natural algae in that water, and we had that package where they use the lake and they come down to the pool. Well, our chemicals had to work overtime. That's just how it was, all the algae brought in, we had, losing battle with that green color for a lot of summer. We were able to contain it, but we had to put more chemicals in, and it took a lot more toll in that sense. For concession, obviously, all we did miss was repairs, the items that we needed, food for Sam's love. But again, crazy weekends, I would go Monday to get stuff for Sam's, and I'd have to go back the Saturday just for Sunday. Great problems to have, but it, it went up in pricing right after that $5 started. Aqua Park, so there's something with this, so this is $51,922.46. $43,000 of that was the new equipment that was put in, including anchors, bungee, we had to get a boat motor, we had to get a troll motor and a gas motor, and then obviously other materials that were needed to actually install it. That is something that will never, that shouldn't be that high unless we start putting in more material, and right now, it's kind of one perfect that we have before we add too much into it, but that's kind of something that will be taken off coming into next year. And then overtime, again, had to do with borrowing guards, not having enough staff. I had lifeguard that would leave right at August, where either college, or they had another job opportunity. So, we left short staff, and I had basically all hands on deck, whoever could work would have to work, you know, regardless of how many hours they had to work. And for the most part, all the employees, these kids, I mean, 16 up, they were very devoted, they stayed, they worked, I mean, it was hard. And one girl had to go home because she had sun poisoning. She, she worked, and then obviously we gave her a couple of days off after that, but I mean, it was just, it was good, but they stayed dedicated. But it didn't take a toll on overtime salaries, et cetera.
What was the other, if the $43,000 of the stuff was for equipment, what was the other $8,000 for?
Well, well, some of the stuff we bought after, so like, I think it was, it was put on the other part, I don't have the exact breakdown, I can't look at them, but we also had the food for concession that we put up there. We did buy more life jackets, because we ran out of life jackets at one point. We bought extra stuff for the Aqua Park in case something failed. It was just a lot of maintenance equipment and taken care of. But again, that should not be as much, we have everything now we need to make sure it's continually running, and if there is a hiccup, we have patches, we have buoys, we have chains, we have fun, everything. So, that should drastically change on the next summer. As everyone in the booth is aware, the concession, with the possibility of having a bid out, that'll save a lot on the part-time salaries, that'll be less workers that we have to hire and put in there, as well as concessions, that's a lot less Sam's runs, a lot, and those were $600 almost every trip. And obviously overtime, I wanted to take concession workers and put them on carts and have them take them more time than they, they were supposed to. And in theory, that, we should end up making, trying to be the same as what we made this year for concession, but we definitely won't have nowhere near what we spent for concession to actually keep it running. Overall, if, for those who came out to the park and saw it, I mean, it was a blast. Overall, for those who came out to the park and saw it, I mean, it was a blast. It was a ton of people, left and right, people that from all over, we had a baseball tournament from Bluefield that came in. They said they want to make it a destination when they come back next year. I mean, it took off. So I believe we continue that path, these numbers will go up in revenue. We're going to try to add something small, every year, to kind of keep it growing. And I mean, it was a fun summer, we hope to continue that as we keep going for a little bit more this year.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have none.
You have, we have revenue of eighty-two, expense of one thirty-five, that should be negative fifty-three or whatever, review showing a negative two-seventy.
No, okay, so that, so sorry, that's the, that, the bottom line I have here is just everything on lineups and budget, there's just one overall. So basically, from the, from the day of April first through September thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, that's just every lineup. I just go just one with March seventh, see what was done from that point. And we added salaries, insurance, so that was, that was one of the mass numbers to have there, that's actually piece information.
So if you take the forty-three thousand off the aqua park, and you look at your expenditures outweighing your revenues by about nine thousand dollars?
And again, that was done before the budget year of reset. But that also means it would take away from the revenue a little bit, because we didn't have some money making from Memorial Day through Black Friday. But the bomb came out, July first, when we started the five dollars, which was July sixth of the first weekend.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Can I show you this? I was looking for this.
He watched the basket.
Our expenditures are about to go up again. It's like a river, too.
Yeah.
Is that the little, the two locomotive bungee thing?
No.
No, it's got, I like, where's the link? Where's that from?
Sportsman gear with that.
Where's Marina?
Let's move on to the third one.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, so Todd's going to give us some water hydraulic discussion?
Okay, I want to talk a little bit about water, contrary to popular belief, I know y'all are not aware of this, but over the last couple of months, we've had a few water leaks. But I want to go back in time just a little bit, since I've been here anyway. When I started, there was a water tank over in North Tazewell, so half a million gallons of water tank that had already been taken offline. The system had been manipulated valve-wise, pump station-wise, to add fire flow to North Tazewell and the surrounding areas because that multi-domestic water tank, which means it's fire flow and domestic water, was taken offline. So since that time, we've struggled a little bit with the water system, an aging water system. I think, matter of fact, I know what it is, when I first started, sent the elected officials pictures of the inside of the pump station, just to show how antiquated they are. Well, I don't have to tell you that underground, under Finn Castle and Riverside and other streets in town, that same type of material exists. We jumped, we joined ranks in regionalization, which the health department was heavily pushing and heavily funding, regionalization. Saving capital, spreading out, giving a lesser impact financially to an independent locality or dependent locality, or PSA or county. And what we did ultimately was we saved over two million dollars in expense by building a water tank that's right over here at Black's Chapel, right now brand new water tank, and putting that fire flow not only in North Tazewell, but also serving higher elevations than might have had little individual pump stations. Also, in the future, it'll take off Pine Street, Forest Street. So there was no doubt about it, that it was a good plan. However, the system in the ground left a whole lot to be desired. And did we really know how bad it was? And we knew it was in bad shape. David was putting Band-Aids back on when he was working for the town. And I know David's seen twenty-foot joints of pipe that had ten clamps on it before, he said he has. I know I've seen it, and I've gone, he's seen a bunch of it. But another thing, another problem we had is we couldn't qualify, and there wasn't none out there. Grants, so everybody says, "Go after grants." Well, I can tell you, staff and I, in the last, since two thousand thirteen, has probably, has probably done twenty-three billion dollars in grants. They're really aggressive with going to get grants. Well, they're nonexistent when it comes to water system. Now, back in the seventies and early eighties, you could have replaced the entire town for a little bit. But the price of material today, the economy, it's just not out there anymore. But what it's done for us today, the health department has seen the problems we're having. So the health department, the Office of Drinking Water, will come in here on a regular basis anyway. They'll inspect my distribution system, they'll go with Donnie, they'll climb your water tanks, they'll go in the pump stations. We check water, we take it to individual homes, we sample water, we do all the right things to be sure that we are delivering pressure, quality, quantity, and absolutely healthy water to the citizen. We still are today, if your line ain't broke. So what the health department has seen is that we are in dire straits. And they've also seen the regionalization idea, and we've actually got an opportunity to capitalize on that because of what happened. So it was a nightmare to live through. And I know the mayor was right in the middle of it, each one of y'all were getting any phone calls, people were coming to y'all, officers are calling you. It was a nightmare to live through. But ultimately, what we're finding out today, and unfortunately, I couldn't go with Rick last week to Richmond, and Tim Taylor in Richland, and Ike, and Rick, and a couple of other people went to Richmond last week, and I was supposed to go, unfortunately, I couldn't go because of other business engagements I had. But they were able to come back with some really good potential funding. And Rick's going to talk about it during the meeting in open forum. But I just kind of wanted to give you that, you know, give you a little bit of a perception, you know, every door closed is a good door open, and that's what's happened here. I can guarantee you that those funds would not have been available had not Richmond inhabited and seen what was going on in Tazewell with the regionalization and the problems we were having. So we've got an opportunity, and Rick's going to present it later, for us to replace water lines, it might be a little time down the road, but to actually replace water lines in town and maybe save some money in doing so. So I know Finn Castle needs to be paved, I already know that. I drive it every day, too. And we're going to do everything we can to make that a, to make that a reality. This coming, well, it'll be, it'll be the fall.
It will bring people to see the beautiful streets and sidewalks with new water lines underneath.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice.
Okay, so next, I made a special note, funds from the general funds of the water fund for water line replacements, so I guess I go kind of hand and hand.
You've got a budget amendment, you've got a budget amendment in front of you that I'm requesting council support in order to replace the water main that's located under Finn Castle. The idea is to go from approximately Coach King's house all the way down to Tazewell Avenue. The unofficial quote, and what I mean by unofficial, we would have to bid that out, but the unofficial quote has been in nineties, we've got that price there for you. Also, I want to let you know that that doesn't include a whole lot of gravel, which is going to take a whole lot of gravel, but I think I can find it in existing budget. Equipment, we already paid the man part, y'all know how that goes. So we've got most equipment, we want to do this in-house, and Rick comes out for this. If we were to have, if we were to have to hire it out, it's actually in the report, he's going to show later, you'd be approaching a million or more dollars to do this if we were to have to hire it out. But Donnie feels confident, and he's proved it over Riverside, he's proved it on a number of streets in town, he's very capable of making this happen. And like I said, we're going to try to pay, pay it back. But I'm recommending that we move some funds from the general fund to the water fund in order to make this a reality. I'll also, I'll also let you know that going into the budget year, you're going to have to pay that. And with the condition of your water system, I don't think you can deny that doing due diligence on water rates is coming in order to proceed with this, in order to make this a reality. And it seems like every year, as the economy goes, the way it goes, and projects come up that we need to do, cost is always at the top. We do not have a slush fund. I was moving fifty thousand out this year, but I'm not going to be able to. Those, I'm not going to go through them unless you want to talk about them individually. But I'm looking for approximately eighty-three thousand, ninety thousand to move over. Any of you have any questions? It's a vote on the agenda for that, but do any of you have any questions up their line?
The paving part, isn't our paving machine pretty narrow compared to that heat light street?
We don't have a paving machine.
What do we use before?
We've got a roll one.
Okay.
We do it by hand, we don't have a paving machine, Donnie would love to have one, to do backstreets. But these primaries, like Riverside and Finn Castle.
It's way back when Jerry Wood did, like, Way Out There by Water Street.
We got a drag box.
Oh, yeah, we've got a drag box that will bound.
It is. It works on the backstreet, but you couldn't do it on the main road. So when you say paving, you don't mean you're going to pave the whole of Finn Castle, just the spots that need it?
Well, I would like to pave the whole route, but I've got, no, this is just a water line, I'm sorry. This is just to replace the water line under Finn Castle.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, this is the reason we've been holding off on paving Finn Castle.
So if I can get the water line replaced, then I can pave it and feel confident that I won't have to go back in there and paint.
I'm sorry, we're not going to paint.
I can pave that.
You're talking about Coach King's, right, so rough through there, Kings to Tazewell.
Yeah, it's real rough, it's rougher in other places.
As it works.
Another barber that won't be there.
So the whole Finn Castle, Tazewell, all that'd be great, right?
Just Finn Castle, from Tazewell Avenue to Coach King.
That's a big stretch.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of money, a lot of paving there.
You're looking for a vote there, and?
Yeah, I can't vote, I just want to, just want to be sure that you have any questions there.
Any questions for our vote?
Alright, one other thing, I'm going to let Stan come up. There's five towns, obviously, in the county. And we've always been considered one of the big three. In Bluefield, Tazewell, and Richland. Richland is the largest county, I mean, largest town in the county, you got Bluefield, Tazewell right behind it. But our two biggest competitors we have when it comes to employees are Richland and Bluefield. When it comes to the police department, they steal them right and left, and it's because they have LEOs. And we've talked about this a little bit in the past, and David knows exactly what I'm talking about. But LEOs is a benefit to an officer when he retires, it's pretty significant on their paycheck. But it comes at a price for the locality. So Tazewell County has LEOs, it's had them for years. Richland has LEOs, they've had them for probably since two thousand, I don't know. And Bluefield just picked it up two years ago, LEOs. So it comes at an expense, but I'm going to ask Stan if he'll come forward and explain the program to you. We're not looking for a vote tonight. But I do want to let you know some of the problems that we're having when it comes to hiring qualified officers, and why, and some of the benefits that are out there.
Thank you, sir. We actually requested the study back in June, and just got it in December, it took them a while to get this one, or July, it was July. And they actually, we started studying in December, it takes a while, and there's a lot that goes into it. As Mr. David was saying, Bluefield and Richland both have it, we can't compete with the county, there's no way when it comes to salaries and stuff, they have a state background, so we just, the towns cannot compete with that. We here in the town of Tazewell is the highest paid resident for our officers by eighty dollars a year, which, that's, still yet, still yet. There is a locality that is in the works of adding six thousand dollars across the board to their police officers, which is going to put them at a starting rate of twenty, thirty-seven thousand, or thirty-one oh eight, or thirty-one thousand eighty. That's going to put them at thirty-seven thousand, so we're starting to fall behind and everything. So we're asking for your help, please give us the LEOs. And the LEOs will add straight up, it's going to put money in my bank account. But that's what we're competing against, is with these other departments in southwest Virginia. There's, the only, the only department in Tazewell County that doesn't have it is Pocahontas and Cedar Bluff. And that's because they don't have the people that would be required, you have to have five or more people, and they don't have enough officers to have it. And Corrigan Hospital, of course, it's a private police department, and they're not eligible for it. But every other department has it. One locality is paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year for the LEOs program. The other locality is paying seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Our report is coming back that we could pay seventy thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars a year. I know that's a lot of money. We are in the process right now of advertising for an officer. We have had two officers that has left, because, not currently, but in the past, because they were offered LEOs. And when you get eleven, eleven hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month extra, that's enticing to read. In order for us to keep officers here, in order for us to bring good officers here, we're asking that you please help us on this. And it's something that's, I don't know if you know what it is, it's LEOs, it's law enforcement officer supplement, it's for hazardous duty pay. The code of Virginia allows it, and every sheriff's department, the state of Virginia has it, state police has it, Van Commission has it, and most small localities have it. So I'm asking to be competitive and get us to that before we get way, way behind it. As I said, one department is getting ready to go to thirty-seven thousand starting salary, or thirty-one thousand.
Where's that, the experience?
That's just starting out, and straight out, you want, you want to go and add to your experience?
Now, the thirty-one thousand, that's what, that's what you've got now, right?
Yes, sir.
And you want to push it to thirty-seven thousand?
We, we're not asking for pay raise, we're just asking that we, if we get LEOs apart to go with the VRS, we're not asking for a pay raise.
Commission technically.
All pure, if you're handing out, we're not, I mean, we like bad money to my bank account as well.
I just want to keep our officers here in town, I mean, I agree, there's something I don't even know. You hire them, and the next thing you know, they, they left.
And we have one that's leaving going to a private sector, it's not even one in the law enforcement. But that has nothing to do with what I was speaking about tonight, he's just, he's just giving them more money in the private sector. But I, I do want to ask that you, you guys, please help us if you can. I know that's a lot of money, too. You got my support, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so the next thing you guys, if you'll recall, it was three or four years ago, Back of the Dragon had a, their last event. At the time, the town put in a match, and the county matched it. And there was, there was some revenue brought in from that, and I've got every bit of the revenue, who it was from, the vendors that did it. But there is some money that's left in that account that's earmarked for, quote unquote, Back of the Dragon and the events, it's always been held here and had. So I don't have... So I don't have the know-how to spend the money, nor was it earmarked, it's encumbered fund, it's not non, I mean, it's not, it's unencumbered fund, it's for Back of the Dragon. But they have a, they have a grand opening event on May the 23rd. I think they've got a couple, I think it's Waylon Jen and.
Correct.
Who is it? Waylon Jen's grandson and Johnny Cash's grandson, yeah, so we got two. You got two, they're gonna have a pretty big event. But anyway, they're asking for that total for that event, and that total remaining in there is ten thousand, two forty-one. Obviously, it's for Back of the Dragon, that's gonna be on your, on your agenda tonight for your vote. Do you have any questions about it?
And this is money that's come in that they had.
The previous events, yeah.
From previous events that was designated to go towards Back of the Dragon. Has it gone to them before?
Well, what we, what we did, what we did annually for about three years was budget, about ten thousand dollars a year to support them and grow them, and obviously, it's worked. But they are having their grand opening, and we still got this money in that account. It's been sitting there gaining interest, by the way, but they're asking for it. I don't know how I can not recommend a new one, it's their money in the general. Any questions?
Start mine.
Todd, you got one more this time? I was wondering, you thought I was letting you make a request?
Oh, you've also got a request in here from Jack Compton for funds. We discussed it a little bit via email. Any of you have any questions about those funds?
What is our, what are we talking for? About two hundred and twenty-five each?
One to ten is fifty to two hundred.
That's for each person, it's just gonna be a little over two thousand.
I want to clarify just for the record, I'm not trying to eat away, but the majority of the kids are outside of our political jurisdiction, like that accurate comment and all.
It says there's none from our region. If they're not from our, they're from the area.
So it's one to ten, fifty to two hundred, eleven is fifty, fifty to three hundred. What was the one to ten, fifty to two hundred, and eleven to fifty, kids, fifty to three hundred? It's not even fifty, so.
And that's coming up on your, yeah.
We don't have this many people here to cancel, they, those are worse. All right, only thing, only thing left, anyone have any questions about that, by the way? Am I ready to move on that? Only thing that I've got remaining, and then you can take a two or three minute break, is I need to schedule a budget work session.
Pretty long, we can talk, six, eight in the morning?
I don't know, I can do this. I mean, I can do it, but getting the two kids out of the house in the morning is probably not gonna happen.
We're out here about seven.
So you'll be able to get my kid on the bus at some point?
I'll be going.
Here we go. That's Saturday, Saturday morning, I guess. Can you send out one of those things? I'll just send out, I'll send out a doodle call. Doodle, doodle call. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna conclude the work session and take a couple minute break until seven thirty, and then we'll start the public, the public council meeting.